Good evening and welcome to the July 8th Proctor Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is to view and approve the agenda. I'd like to add three things under new business. I'd like to add policies, MRP, and the tax rate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the June 24th, '24 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. We have Maggie from Rutland Regional, and there was a handout on the table that she's going to discuss. The floor is yours.
Yeah, actually I can make another handout if you want.
Oh sure, yeah, yeah. We love handouts.
So, I'm here tonight, first of all, Maggie, for our annual regional planning commission. I'm here tonight because FEMA has, quite frankly, unprecedented funding opportunity for a region or state at large. So, it's called the Hazard Mitigation Program. And this is a project that is released from FEMA to the state after a federally declared disaster. In this case, we're talking about the floodings that happened almost a year ago. And typically, we're, sorry, back up. So for everything, we got $45 million. For this program, we're making $90 million. If that gives you a hint on how unprecedented this is. So, we've been instructed by the modeling management to reach out directly to our towns and try to identify the potential products to get into the pipeline. Had radiation type projects. So some of the eligible projects types include things like coalwork upsizing, property buyouts, natural systems type projects, and by that I mean floodplain restoration, burn removals and removal, things along those lines. And the only real requirement is that you have an active local hazard mitigation plan, as Proctor does. You don't necessarily need to have damages from the flooding or anything, and the municipality is open to receiving these funds. And the best part, typically there is a 25% cost match from the municipality. However, with the passing of the state budget this year, it's covering that in its entirety. So the municipality does not have to put any money upfront.
Wow, that's good.
So there's no match, period?
Correct.
Okay. Well, if you say any money upfront, there's always coming in the backside. Okay, great.
Do you have any questions so far?
This was the handout that you had handed out?
So that is the notice of funding, which is information from the modeling management about the program. And I actually gave you the handout for tonight, which basically summarizes all the points I'm talking to you about. So the next important thing to know, if this town decides any want to pursue a product comment for this program, there is a pre-application that is submitted to the EM online. And it's a pretty basic application. You just ask for the description of what the problem is, the product application, the proposed solution to the problem, and how much that's going to cost, including where the cost estimate came from. And then the history of damages, that's going to be a pretty important one, at least for FEMA's case. If you have evidence, various repairs that you've made over the years, because of past damages, and how much it costs, that will help your case with FEMA. Now, there is one contingency, I guess, if you can recall that. The projects already have to have some scope of development. So by that, I mean, you need to have enough information to complete a cost benefit analysis for the full application, which is due in January or February '25. So you don't need to have the cost benefit analysis done now for the application, but it will be on the horizon. And the whole thumb I've been given from being able to have about 30% of your desired engineering scope complete by beginning of the calendar year. So that's another important thing to keep in mind. But pre-application itself is due August 16th, so it's going up very fast. So if there's any big projects that Proctor had on the fat burger that couldn't be funded one way or another, this is a great opportunity. Most of our municipalities are going for coalwork upsizing, but we do have, let's see, there's maybe some road and bank stabilization wells. I know Colberg is looking into implementing the results of a flooding study. So there's a couple of things that we're there that we have to provide for, and it's an inspiration.
So can you only do, like, if you're doing coalworks, that can't do coalworks, and let's say dam? It has to be one project?
Oh, no, it happens in multiple projects.
Okay.
Now, obviously, it's up to the EM whether they will approve all of those projects to go past the various process, but there's no technical limit.
Okay.
So now, Lisa mentioned, as far as, like, say dams, would it cover anything that, like, all the towns are going through issues with dams, smaller dams, and VLCT not covering them for insurance purposes, because most of them are in poor shape?
Oh.
So one of the big things is, you know, getting those repaired, or how do we, you know, do we get rid of the dam? You know, what do we look at? Because we have engineering reports already done on that. Would that qualify if we needed, because of, say, there were another catastrophe, like, say, a major, major flood that could overflow those waters? If the dams were in better shape, then we'd be able to, you know, support that?
So I probably have a statement to talk about in terms of dam removal, because the whole intent of the program is to restore natural waterways and quote-unquote "give the river space" as the EM wants to say it. That being said, I feel like we could make a good case for proving that, you know, fixing this dam is going to prevent future impacts that might be worth looking into. I know we still have to check with the EM to know about any time on that.
Because these are all, like, natural, we have the pool, the pond, the reservoir. And so they're all used for swimming, they're all recreation, just beauty. You have things like that, they all have a dam. I mean, you're talking, you know, not like...
It's not a good idea.
Exactly, so, yeah, so I don't know if that would...
Yeah, if you could circle back and let us know, like, if you're not removing it, if you're asking to have it repaired, that would be great, before we, like, focus on that as a project.
Okay, yeah, you have to do that.
Yeah, because being more preventative is better than being reactive to it.
Yeah.
Which costs less money.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tricky thing with FEMA is you kind of have to prove that, like, it's been reactive to something before.
Yeah.
No.
Right?
Well, how do you prove natural floodplain access to improve ecological floodplain function? You know, there's a section in town that I would like to see that occur.
Where is it?
On West Proctor.
Okay. Can we tell them a little bit more about it?
It's an area that used to be trenched, and it used to run into Meats Cove, and the water used to flow pretty freely down through that area. And it kept the neighbors on West Street pretty dry when that was open and flowing. But over time, with silt filling in, albers growing, and just the material that's growing in the area is preventing the water from flowing, you know, into Otter Creek. Now it's backing up into the neighborhood. You know, not to the point where they are getting flooded out, but it's just, you know, very wet backyards. And they used to be dry. Or they would dry out, you know, after a big rain. But now we're having issues with drainage.
Okay, I understand. So I think it's going to be one of those cases where if you don't have any evidence of property damage, then it's not something that's likely to be as helpful, because the whole, the whole thing with FEMA is it has to be asked, and the only way to prove that is to compare to, you know, past damages, and how does this weigh up against, you know, how much money we're coordinating for this project?
And I think doing, like, a scoping study on any of these projects that we're looking at is what's going to, what's going to give them the information that, yeah, this is...
Yeah, and that's the one contingency I mentioned about this program. If you don't have a scoping study going yesterday, then at this point, there's probably not much you can do. But I wanted to at least make it more aware that it's an opportunity, it's an unprecedented opportunity, $90 million, it's something that's not going to be...
Right, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Go to the rack and try to do a scoping study.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just give the handout to kind of summarize the bullet points of what I talked about, okay?
Okay.
If you have any questions, I am the point of contact for this program, so...
Yeah, if you could just circle back about the DMs to Judy, because we do have the scoping studies in place for those.
Okay. We just got the level of that right there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
I can go someplace cool.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bye-bye. All right, see you later, thanks. All right, the bills are going around. We have highway paving bids to open, we have two bids. So we have... Will this have the sheet with the streets on it, or just have the bid?
I don't know what they'd send you back.
Hmm.
Do we have those bids?
So they have their certificate of insurance, and I guess we'll just do total.
Cost.
Yeah, the total cost from WELK is $414,367.70. Breakdown is... And the total from Pike is $433,666.50. So the big difference seems to be in Cold... In, oh, well, they don't even have the same, oh, they have two different kinds of forms that they...
Does one not?
One didn't have the, so, I'm like, I was like, that's not the same.
Yeah, you know why? Because they were emailed out. I bet he didn't print that one out. Is that Pike?
Hmm, yeah. So Pike puts their traffic control in their bid. The reclaim is $29,169 from Pike, $22,38 from WELK. The pavement is $358,380 from Pike, it's $337,550 from WELK. And the reclaim is $29... Oh, did I already say that? Cold Plain is $32,778 from WELK and $46,117. So there's not huge. I guess it's, you don't really know what they factored in as traffic control.
Finding flaggers, just flaggers of the...
No, but I mean, like, because the other things aren't that huge, you know what I mean? Like, in terms of differentials.
And what's the flagger difference?
We don't know what, they don't put anything in.
Oh.
They say it's included in their bid price.
Okay, they probably just use...
So, so the low bid, obviously, is WELK at $414,367.70. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Do we have to go with the entire project, or what did we budget for this?
Do we have to do this project, Jimmy?
Well, no. What did we... Entire project design. Yeah, you know, we put in a, in the budget $150,000.
Yeah, and I checked today with the state, because I had a thing saying we had $76,000 from the state for this year, July to next June. And then, in another email, he said, well, that, that, there was certain money, the same amount, it seemed like, for the Florence project, that was that emergency project they had to do, and that was used up already. But we get, we get funding from the state every year, it's, I think, $67,000. So that's what we've got. So, and there was concern expressed to me that what we budgeted isn't going to be enough, knowing how much we're doing. I mean, just, this alone, from last year, has bumped up $100,000.
So do you want to hold these till the next meeting and look at, look at...
Breaking them?
Well, the problem is, these aren't broken, I mean, we didn't bid it that way to break it out via...
Well, yeah, because the Cold Plain and the, they're two different, they're two different projects. The one on Florence, they would basically scrape the entire road up...
Okay.
And then resurface. The other one, they'd just grade it down.
So do you want to bring that to us at the next meeting, so we can have a better idea of what the streets are?
Which is...
To make a better decision, or...
The majority, I think it's a mile or so on Florence.
Yeah.
But, like, Pleasant's really bad.
So is this year.
Going down the hill.
Yeah, I'd like to see it done, but it's just where we're going to come up with the $200,000 difference.
Right, right. I mean, we do have that reserve fund that we move money, and I'm not certain if we can use that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if not, I mean, if it's a perfect thing to use it for, I think.
Yeah.
The roads have to get done, because next year, we're going to have other roads.
Yeah, it'll be way more than that next year.
So if you'll do this, can we get clarification if we can use it for that, that funding for paving?
Yep.
And we're talking the Arken, right?
Yep.
Or the...
Yep.
And, and then maybe bring a list of the streets? So if we can't, we can look at these again and have a, make a better...
Well, I can tell you what streets they are.
Right, but I mean, so if we have the streets and the Cold Plain is only going to be to Florence Road, or something like that, I mean, if you have a list, then you can kind of build it out.
Okay.
I think, I don't know. Well, what do you guys want to do?
Well, the total, well, what we're looking at, you're looking at $414 minimum anyways.
Yeah.
And we're talking, budget is how much?
$150 plus possibly $76 from the state.
Two-something, so like you said, it's $200,000.
$200,000 as a gap.
Possibly not due.
Well, so that's the question, though. If she looks and sees if that other money is an option to expend for that, then it's an easy, easier decision.
Yeah.
So would you like to wait till the next meeting, just to have...
I don't know, I haven't been involved with the end of a fiscal year, you know, budget surpluses, you know, or budget deficits, how that's handled. You know, I don't know, we've just completed fiscal year '24.
Yep.
You know, so I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you right now, the paving budget will have a surplus in it for...
You know, is there any money that's available, you know, from the closeout of the current year?
I would, I would...
That we could leverage.
A paving budget shouldn't have anything in it, because we went all that last year with West Street.
But there should be a surplus, because you moved Arken money to... Supply.
For the next, not the end of, not last fiscal year.
You didn't put it in this past fiscal year? You didn't use...
It was the budget we just created, where it was moved.
Okay, I thought you used some of it for this past fiscal year, too.
Yes, we did, $150,000.
That's for this year.
That's, that's for April '25, but I thought for this past year, you used some also.
Yes, we did use some. We used some with water and sewer, I think that was 10...
That was for the fiscal '25, it would...
Oh, okay, okay, that's right.
Yeah, that was April '25, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know, I just know what West Street came out at, and what we had for funding, and it was over.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, do you want, do you want to see, I mean, by...
Yeah, I'll call them both, I can call them both, too, because I know, I know what roads are going to be, what dollar figure goes to what road, and what dollar figure goes to Florence. Florence is totally different, the other's...
Okay.
So...
So maybe if we get out that breakdown for the next meeting, that would be helpful. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's safe to hold it for total next meeting.
And then I guess the next question for them would be, where would we follow on the schedule? I mean...
Right, well, it has to be done by October 1st.
Yeah, so that would be the question.
Mm-hmm.
Can't be done after.
Yeah, they know that, going in, so I don't think...
Well, I know.
They shouldn't bid on it if they can't. That's part of the bid requirement.
Right, but I think in the past, we've had some issues here with the, with doing work, when, you know, several years ago, we did up on Olympus and like that, it was problematic doing, they were peeping when it was cold, basically.
Okay.
Now, he's with who, Lisa?
That was with WELK.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
We can always ask the question, I guess.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want...
Well, it's good to be...
Got a clear couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll follow up with that and make it, make that decision at the next meeting. Tyler Technologies amended agreement for appraisal services in your pocket, you had a handout that explained the cost changes. Is there any more? Sweat dripping off my...
So this is basically just an amendment to the agreement that we initially agreed upon. They wanted 15% upfront, and this has changed to 10% upfront. And then it's going to be equal to 10% billing, and then the percentage of the projects completed during over preceding four, preceding four weeks. So they're changing, it's actually, the way Lisa explained it to me, it's to our benefit that we're just putting up less upfront.
So it's 15 to 10, and then charging, or invoicing us over a four-week...
Yeah, every four weeks, yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
That's the, they're billing every four weeks for the previous four weeks worked that was done.
Yeah, you're billing behind, right.
Yeah.
Yes, one question. Lisa Wright.
Uh-huh, yeah.
You know, on the original Exhibit B, it has Paragraph 2 expenses. The service fees in the investment summary include travel expenses. That's in the original Exhibit B. Now, on the amendment, it says Section 1, Exhibit B, you know, it's to replace Section 1 in its entirety. Now, I assume that's Section 2 in the original, so that would stay that...
Any, all of Exhibit B in the original is depleted, and it's changed to this.
So does that mean they can charge us now for travel expenses if we delete that line? If you look at the original Exhibit B, Item 2.
It says that travel will be charged?
That it's included in the fees in the investment summary, so it's already built into, you know, the $86,000. But I'm just afraid if we delete that, they could start billing us for...
Saying they're going to bill for...
Yeah, travel. Does anybody need to see what the original is?
Yeah, can I just take the wording of that?
Yeah.
I'm a better reader than I am listener sometimes. The surface using the best... But if you delete it, then it means it's... You're afraid they're going to come back and want to put it somewhere else?
Well, I just don't want to give them the opportunity to charge us for travel expenses.
Well, this is Section 1.
Yes, well, that's what I was asking.
B, and this is 2.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think it's a totally different, a separate item.
Yeah. The only thing is, with the amendment, you know, they've got them listed as items, sections 1, 2, and 3. So we've got a existing 2 in...
Oh, you mean these numbers here?
Yes.
I don't think that's, I don't think...
Okay.
1, 2, and 3 are in reference to that. I think they're just listing their...
There's, yeah.
The three issues on this amendment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that B was still in the original, still applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and basically, number 2 is, it's governed, the amendment is governed and prescribed by the terms and conditions of the agreement, the original agreement. So I think it's just, it's just 1 that's being altered.
Yeah.
Yep.
Number 1. Yeah, because 3, it says, shall remain in full force, except what is expressly indicated in this amendment. So that's what the 1, 2, and 3 mean on this. Okay. All right.
They just sign?
Good question.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'd like the motion to approve the amendment.
Yeah. So can I have a motion to approve the amendment?
Motion to approve the amendment?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll authorize you. You're the only one that needs to sign, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, the fire department, Florence, do we have any schedule for that?
Um, no, he's waiting for them. They said they'd get a schedule to us this week, so after the 4th of July, the following week, they should have a schedule to us.
From the people doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, timberlot update.
All right, so he marked the trees, started, I think, the week before last, and he did them last week, and then on 4th of July, he stopped, and he was going to go back out after the 4th of July. He was looking for a deed or a map, because there's a certain section of the property that he couldn't quite determine where the border was, what was ours, what was not ours. So we actually, Lisa Wright was actually looking for a map, was doing map stuff the other day, and found two maps that were never coded, and one of them was that property, so it was like, yes. So I was lucky. So I let him know that we do have a map, it's rather large, so he can come here and view it, and then he'll figure out. Because he told me that there's a lot of ash growth in there, and that, you know, like, it should have been cut a long time ago, because it really needs to get out of there, because it gets, it just diseases and brings down the forest if it's not taken care of and stuff. So he said he's calling ex-ash, which are standing dead trees, and no visible degradation and stuff. But he said it's come up with ash on projects before, and appears to be as much related to forest age, crowding, and growth stage. So, but he said, he made it sound like there's some good timber out there, too.
Has that ever been harvested? Or has it been harvested in the last 15 years?
Oh, I know, I think years ago, they did harvest it, but not yet.
Those pines, when were the pines done, right on Florence Road? They cowed at the town forest.
On the right-hand side going out?
Left-hand side, going up north.
Right, and that's one I think he talked about, because he said there looks like there was a landing made already once for them to go in there.
Yes, yes, that's where they were there, and I don't remember how long ago that was.
Yeah, that was a good few years ago. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like it was, but then 15 years.
Yeah, right. Especially when you don't keep track of time when you're retired, you know?
Okay. So they anticipate going in...
Um, he did say as far as cutting.
Okay.
So I think once he gets everything marked, then he'll give me a better update.
Okay. All right, at least it's in process. All right, there was an updated Beaver Pond ordinance on your desk when you arrived. That is the current updated version.
There's not really too many changes since the last time you looked at it?
No, so like...
Facilities is gone, I noticed that one.
The what?
Table of contents, access hours to Beaver Pond facilities, and the new one, I think that's gone.
It is.
Yeah.
So one of the changes was, there seems to be, I don't know, back and forth about number 2. And what, like, to me, when you talk about Beaver Pond, you're talking about the property, the pond, the park, like, that's Beaver Pond, right?
Yeah.
You don't think so, Albert?
No, I agree with you, I agree, but I just, I just, just think about the person that comes to this town for the first time.
Well, that's why, so...
You know, we know what Beaver Pond is, what it's...
Also, I, so this is how I changed it. I put, under Article 2, reference to Beaver Pond in the ordinance includes all property defined below. And so rather than saying, like, this pertains to Beaver Pond Park, this pertains to Beaver Pond Park picnic area, when we're talking about it in here, the rules apply to the pond... pond, the park, and the picnic area. And when we say Beaver Pond, that's captured, Beaver Pond captures all three of those things.
Excellent, cause I was gonna have a couple of questions for your comments about Beaver Pond.
Okay, I'll take them.
All right, now?
Yeah.
Okay, when we look at Article Seven on Page Two.
Yep.
And Article Eight on Page Three.
Yep.
Third offense, results, and prohibition to Beaver Pond. And I wanted to say, Beaver Pond, that's just the water portion, but with your definition, you've got it covered.
Everything, that's everything.
You've got it covered, so, so that was good. And that was the other thing with the Article Three on Page...
So I did change that up a little bit to...
Yeah, access hours to Beaver Pond. Again, now, while you're changing the definitions,
No.
That tells us that, you know, it's any part of Beaver Pond.
Yeah.
In the, in the paragraph, we're talking about the picnic area, so, so that covers that.
I mean, I did leave that in, because I think everyone was kind of in agreement, April First to November First.
Yeah, no, no.
Other than that. I did add, just in light of the recent conversations, media, and like that, Section Five on Article Five, and just having conversation with Judy, that gives her a little more power to contact Rockland County Sheriff, it's in the ordinance. So if that's capturing that in here, gives them the opportunity to address an issue that we have up there, I think it should be included. I mean, it wasn't in here before, the very first one they had, they allowed it, you know, with some permit or whatever. I think it's easier just, we say, no. If Boy Scouts were to come and say, hey, we'd really like to camp up there for three badges or whatever, you know, Friday to Sunday morning, we can allow that to happen. We have that ability to do that, so.
And the thing is, with campfires, you don't need a permit, but you always have to have landowner's permission.
Yeah.
So if the Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts wanted to have a campfire up there, they'd have to approach, you know, the town and ask, you know, can we have to start a fire, so.
And I don't think we're trying to put the K-Boshed or anything like that, I just think that, you know, you've gotta thank, as you said, globally and globally
Yeah.
For people, so.
It's just more so, you know, people passing through town go, oh, that's a nice spot, I'm gonna camp overnight down there.
Yeah.
We have the right to say, yeah, you can't. Our ordinance says you're not allowed to.
And so I think what, Beast, if we're happy kind of more with Section Four and Five, what I'd like us to do is, and I know that it's kind of been unindeeded with signs up there, but if these are the rules, so to speak, for water and for the property, that we should have those made up and posted. So, because if I'm driving through town, I don't know if this exists.
And the sheriff is gonna say, well, all...
It's not posted.
It's not posted.
But if, I think we could just post the rules from those two sections.
And then I don't think we need any other signs up there.
Probably not, I mean, I think if you...
Well, you need the swimming area defined, because you can't...
Well, there is a sign there.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, those signs would have to stay.
I would, I would, I'd just like a sign at the entrance to the picnic area where it says Beaver Pond, and that's it.
That is, yeah.
I don't want signs anywhere else.
What these rules are.
Right, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Just like the pool.
Yeah.
You know, there's a sign going up to the pool, these are the rules before you enter.
So, okay.
Just keep it neat.
Yeah, so we're not too far in the weeds, but there are some provisions, if there's an issue, Judy has the ability to contact, and, you know, with the changes Jay suggested about, you know, offenses, I think that makes sense, you know? You know, there's no reason we have to go through five times. If you acted poorly, Two and Three, you know, you've acted poorly.
Right.
So...
So can we get a motion to adopt this?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. I'll change the...
Okay, yeah.
And then, one question concerning that policy. Now, does the sheriff department get a copy, just to review it, just to see?
Oh, that we've updated it?
Yeah, or we don't even bother, they would...
I mean...
I think we just have to have ordinances in place.
Yeah, we have ordinances. I mean, I could send them a copy, I don't mind doing that, just to say we updated this, and you might have some provisions here that differ from before, just so you know your parameters on what you can and can't.
Sure. But I think if we post the rules up there, too, that would be just as helpful, so. Okay, a motion would be in order at 6:36 to enter the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Judy.
All right, so I gave the guys a list last week of delinquent accounts that they had to go shut water off. It was kinda tough last week cause of the holiday, because you can't do it, you have to, you can't do it, you could only do it Monday, Tuesday, you can't do it the day before the holiday, you can't do it the day after a holiday, day before a weekend. So I did have them go today, and there was, let's see, originally, one, two, eight properties. I got an agreement on one, another one paid their payment from their agreement, another one paid in full, and another one did come in and sign an agreement. So right now, I just have one that basically is, or two that are gonna be shut off. One was shut off a long time ago already, so that's kind of an issue. It's the house with the fire, it was shut off after the fire.
Oh, and the five corners?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was shut off already, so I'm not sure if she's getting my notices or not, so I have to figure out what to do with that, otherwise, once the water needs to be turned on,
Yeah.
it's gonna be way delinquent.
Sure.
I'd rather have her or him catch it early on than when it's really snowballed.
Now, they had it, they had it shut off because of the fire?
I'm guessing they had it shut off because of the fire.
Right, and that put them delinquent?
Hopefully after the fire.
Well, they haven't paid since, is my, I don't think, if you look, they haven't made any payments.
Since the fire, but the water's been shut off after the fire?
You still have to pay even if your water's shut off.
Okay.
I mean, they could ask...
And come in for an abatement or nothing?
No, not...
They could.
They haven't reached out to me, I haven't ever spoken to them.
Oh, that seems a little odd that they wouldn't try to have that abated after the fire, and now they have to pay.
Yeah.
That's true with anybody, I mean, you could live in a house and renovate it, if you're not using water, you still pay the water and sewer.
Right, well, I'm just wondering if anybody had a conversation with them about it?
Right. I don't know, they haven't reached out to me, I don't think they ever reached out to anybody else prior to me.
Did, does the property owner, did they live up?
No one lives there.
No, 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 before the fire?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it is, they had a chance to do that, and they didn't do that, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, that's like I said, I don't know if they're ma, I would assume their mail goes there, cause...
Either that, I mean, or it's getting forward.
They didn't do a change of address, yeah.
But it could be being held here or something, too.
Yeah.
So you said you had eight properties to shut off, and that's two agreements, one paid in full, and one paid, so what about the others?
So that is, so there are, the one is shut off already, that's kind of issue, and then there's two to be shut off.
And then...
I'm gonna do those tomorrow.
Two shut offs. That still leaves one, two, four, five, six, seven.
One, two, three, four, five, two, five, oh, there's seven on.
Oh, does the one that shut off count as two because it was a duplex?
No, I just, I combine them as...
So there were seven?
Right, I combine them as one.
Okay, so there were seven, okay, I just like numbers to match.
No, you're right, I just...
That's okay. Okay, so two are getting shut off tomorrow?
Uh-huh.
Well, I wouldn't hang out in this building tomorrow. Okay, anything else for water?
Uh, no.
What about the survey we're doing? Have they said anything about, like, response?
The inventory?
Yeah.
I just got an email this morning from the state saying that they've approved the application and the agreement with the engineers to go forward. So I've reached out to our engineers, and then I'm just gonna sign, send them the executed document, and then once they start the work, they'll invoice us for reimbursements.
Okay, but have, I meant the...
They've gone around, and I think they've done all the checks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I was anxious going to send a...
Acknowledgement.
Email.
Email.
Yeah, yeah, they're really on, they're really on top of things.
Yeah, it's, it's nice for a change.
I know. Yeah, no, they're doing a great job, and they stay in communications really well, so they're great.
That's great. Okay, a motion would be in order to move into the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything?
No, other than, one of the guys did reach out to me today, cause when I was asking about the shut offs, he said he was working on a, I don't, a well ish, or think down at the wastewater plant and the issue down there, but he didn't, it was like at 2:30 when he told me, so I haven't gotten any feedback from it, so.
And have we, I mean, where are we, like, with the bond, with any of that, I mean?
Well, we've got the agreement with the engineers and stuff, and we're going through the application process for, you know, grant funding on that, too, so, but we haven't gotten any further.
So we don't think, we're not anticipating voting till March, then?
Think that's what he last stated would be the best, cause there's no way, I don't think, to get everything done by November.
Uh-huh.
Could that be what we were wondering this morning? What we want for stuff in the tax bills, was that the informational file that...
Yeah, but I don't feel like there's really anything concrete to share, it's still kinda just...
They did the summary sheets.
They did the summary sheet for us, and I didn't know if...
I think people aren't gonna care till there's a number, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
I did talk with Celia, and it's hard, like, when you're doing the tax bills and the water bill and the sewer bills, to add two more, you know, things, so if there's another means to get it, you know, even putting it out there, you know, up on the web and stuff, and posting it that it's available here, if you wanna see kind of like a summary sheet of projects, you know?
Well, I do think when we get closer, that they should help us put like a trifle together to mail out, like, we did that before with the water project.
Right.
I just think that is, cause you're gonna hear, I don't get the Rockland Sheriff, I don't watch the...
Oh, I know, yeah.
I don't go online, well, unless you're, even if you're living under Rock, you probably have a postal number.
Well, I get people coming, oh, I didn't, I didn't get my letter, then, I didn't open my mail, I don't know what I did with that notice.
But at least you've done, I feel like that way we've done our due diligence to blanket people
Yeah.
the most efficiently, so, I mean, I ju, I think that. And then, we can also, you know, write about it in the town report also.
Yeah.
You know, cause people get that before you go. So I think that, that's another way to do it, okay. All right, a motion would be in order at 6:44 to leave the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you have the sheriff's report, any questions about that?
Is that car going 80 in the 50 mile an hour?
I know, that's not the first one, though, there was one like, what, what, a month ago or something that was in there?
Over 60 in the 25 miles, so, they got arrested, though.
But the state police have been out a lot, they're on, they were at the cemetery, they were on the pull-off, this morning they were like on the side of the road, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta watch myself. I know I would, but, so...
Well, I think a lot of times from, I'm told the state police isn't on duty when they're parked there, they're doing paperwork at end of shift, and they park someplace, and I think it's just enough to deter people sometime when they're doing paperwork that people are like...
Yeah, but he was parked on the side of the road, I wouldn't think he was.
Oh, on the side of the road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, or like even in the driveway of the cemetery, that seems like a weird...
Yeah, Brook Street, sometimes they're parked down
Yeah.
further in the middle of that section there before the quarry, rather than like at the kind of town hall.
I think that's what they're doing, cause they're just odd areas, but maybe not.
Yeah.
All right, Town Manager's Report.
All right. Okay, let's see, the sidewalk on South Street, it was delayed due to the signs not being here, I got an email today that they should be putting in signs this week, so, and then starting the job. I have a phone call tomorrow morning with Senator Welch's office about the congressional funds.
Oh.
So I will let you know how that goes. Concert in the park this Wednesday again, if the weather cooperates, Green Brothers Band. I got an email right before the meeting that they are spraying for mosquitoes tomorrow evening, so that's actually good, if we do have the concerts.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but it sounded like it was a low dose of insecticide, the way he put it, so, but at least he emailed me directly, which I appreciate, cause I reached out to him over the weekend and said...
So is it on the OCD site?
Just so I don't have to check the website all the time, just, just a heads up, you know?
Yeah.
We're spraying Procter, so, but the testings have been low lately, so.
Well, we have mosquitoes in our neighborhood.
We redirect them all up that way.
And deer flies, too.
Yeah, deer flies.
Deer flies are worse.
Yeah. Okay.
Fourth of July fireworks, no permits were given, and the sheriff was notified of that. We had several fireworks in our neighborhood.
Last night, we had fireworks in our neighborhood.
But none of them lasted, I bet, over five minutes. They were, you know, boom, 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 and that's it, so, it's like, whatever. If there were, you know, grand fireworks that were really, but these were kinda, the one I saw was lit off like in a meadow by the ball field, and
Yeah.
again, it was like three, three ones in the air, and that's it.
So, let's just hope they've used them all, because last night, they were like 9:30 or something.
Yes, it was pulling up 10.
Yeah.
It is dusk earlier than that, so they're gonna let them up earlier.
Oh, they had to cut off dusk?
Yeah, dusk's when you let them up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was dark, we could see them from the front porch, so.
So, so I had sent the updated ordinance to Beaver Pond Committee, and they came back with a couple of those comments that we
Yep.
talked about tonight. I talked about the water shut offs. Tomorrow evening, we have a Parks and Rec Committee meeting at 6:00 PM, and it is here at the office instead of at the rink. So just wanna give you a heads up there. Asbestos removal, basically, when I talked to him, he, I asked him about the pricing, and he said, and, so basically, worst-case scenario, what it looked like, the minimum would be $9,000. If you looked at everything that he listed in that report, in the breakdown, that would be probably the minimum, if you have to have, cause he said, I called him and talked to him, and he said that if they remove the oil tank and there's oil in it, that's another process, they have to bring drums in, they have to remove all the oil from the tank into the drums, you never know if you need one drum, two drum, so he said that's a lot of what the part is, and the letter he sent there with the contract, he said, the sooner he gets approval from us and a signature, he could put us on the agenda, cause he said right now, you know, he's, he's busy, and so we're looking at maybe, if I get it to him soon, October, probably, earliest. So I did call up the tenants of the property, cause I never got the letter back with a signature from the owner. I was told that the person is now back here out of the VA, or, so they said they would have the letter tomorrow morning to me. said they would have the letter tomorrow morning to me. I said, I need the letter to me by tomorrow because I said, we need to get this taken care of. And I said, without a signature from her, I said, I'm going to have to find another alternative of how we get that place cleaned up and how that property ends up coming, becoming the town's property so that we can take care of it.
So they're saying tomorrow morning they're going?
Tomorrow she will bring the letter. So I will let you all know. I'll email you if I get it. I did say they've moved the camper into the driveway now. I said, that's a problem if they do clean up because it's blocking the driveway, getting into the.
Does that mean they're trying to reside there?
No, she said they're going camping.
Oh.
On that property?
No, I can't. So I'm gonna, I might reach out. I, I want to avoid lawyers because I don't like paying fees. But I'm just going to try to find what other methods or means we have to get the place cleaned up, you know, at least get the asbestos out of there. So someone else, if she's got the money, you know.
So.
Get all of the other stuff out of there.
Are you under the impression they have the money to do this?
No.
Okay. I think the other pieces, we need to be keeping good track of the time that we're spending on this so that when the lien eventually gets put on the property, that we can capture all of that back. So, you know, if you're spinning two hour, you know, whatever, that, that needs to be added into that because that can all be captured in that capacity. So.
I did reach out to Zion regarding a status update about what's happening over there, and they will be at the next July meeting. Travis will be here in person and I believe Brendan will be.
To provide an update.
Update. He asked me what the board's looking for and I said, they want logistics, where you're at, what's the status, how far are you from operation, you know, what other means are you getting financially, you know, to fund this project. So I said, just a, you know, real quick overview of, you know, what's, what's going on. So.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, that's what the.
Yeah, the logistics.
The logistics should be used as a timetable, right?
Yeah, that's what it was.
I mean, if there's something specific that someone wants or a question, I think you should send it to Judy so she can provide it to them so they can come prepared to answer.
Right.
I don't want to play like, you know, gotcha moments with them when they get here. I think they should have an opportunity.
What about the landscaping?
The mowing?
If you could ever take care of that, I'm, I'm waiting on that. I don't want to, I'm taking one thing at a time.
Oh. Well, but that's the problem because we sent the letter to Omea, but that, that property, it butts in, so.
Oh, I know. I know. And they'll get one. I mean, the thing is, and we talked about this earlier.
Yeah.
I don't like the fact that the select board has to sign those letters for ground maintenance.
Right.
Because it, it halts the whole process. Like, I can put together thirty letters in one day to send people.
Sure.
With all the property, but I can't because I need your signatures. And I'd like to be able to do it. I'm, I'm the one like kind of learning, you know, who's got garbage, who's got overgrown lawns. And if I can just send a letter to them and just get the ball rolling, but if I have to wait every two weeks to have you sign off on letters, it's, it just kind of puts a cramp in the, is that.
Do.
And they are on my list. I have them for the whole area there to do.
Do you ever send anything out, of course, receive, all reminders of what the expectations are, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable? I mean, is there any reminders that go out?
To.
People ju, I mean, it could be anything, grass, garbage, junk.
You mean the general public?
Yeah.
Uh, no. I mean, it's, it's in our ordinance. It's on my, at the website. I posted a thing about keeping your yards mowed.
Well, no, people don't, they don't hear, they don't get reminded, they don't see notices or anything like that. They just do it. They're not going to get, nothing is prompting them to take care of business at, at home like that, you know? Most people normally would.
Yeah.
But if you don't need to drive around and try to find places or accidentally bump into a yard that, you know, hasn't been cut in two.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? It's, if people had, I don't know, I'm just asking if there was a way that.
I mean, it's in our website and I would hope the common person would know they have to mow their lawn. They can't leave garbage out in the front lawn. They can't.
But if they did, that would be all be taken care of and there obviously isn't. There's.
Well, I think most people text or email or come in and say like.
Nobody goes to our website.
Yeah, and says like, hey, like.
Thank you, Ellen.
You know, my, this is what's happening, you know, is, is there a rule about this?
Right.
Or something like that. I think that's how, and then that generates a notice of violation. So.
Yeah, something, just remind, because if you've got something in the mail and you know that your lawn hasn't been mowed or you've got a junk pile growing, it might be just a reminder saying, you know, I really should take care of that. And it may take care of ten percent or twenty percent.
Yeah. No, it's just like sending out the delinquent notices. Some people are going to come in and pay in full because now you've kind of called them out.
Sure.
And the other people are going to be like.
Right.
Right. It's a small chip. You chip at it, I guess, you know, and I don't know if.
But what I'm saying is I'd like to be able to just send these letters out.
Yeah.
Because I take rides around just, you know, so, because I don't, I don't go on every street in Proctor like every day. So I like to see if there's certain, and all of a sudden you do catch things like, oh, wait a minute, you know? So it's just kind of nice, you know, if I could just go, all right, I've got, I just went by, I found ten more properties that have garbage, old car, you know, something on their lawn. I'd like to just shoot a letter out to them as town manager. I feel like I should be able to not have the select board have to sign off.
Well, you should. I think you're okay.
Yeah, so something we could.
So, well, that feeds into new business.
There you go.
And the hat, policies. So I'd like to start with that one. But I'd kind of like us just to start like we did. Beaver Pond was the trial. And start doing, you know, we have some policies on there. I don't even know some of them if we need. Some of them were created because there was an issue at the time. And, but we could start with that one and we could, you know, change that. But, and that's just part of reviewing policies because things change.
Yeah.
So I'd like kind of for Judy to, you know, this is the one she'd like us to start with, put that on the next agenda or just provide it in a packet maybe for the next agenda. Have people read through it. At the first August meeting, we can discuss changes, you know, things like that and kind of go through that policy or that procedure, if that's okay.
Yes. And I like the policy of getting a copy that we can review prior to.
Oh, yeah.
It saves time and it raises good questions.
Well, plus it's easier if like I go in and mark it, you mark it up. So sometimes it's just as easy to make a copy of whatever you've marked up to share to make, you know, changes too. So, but yeah, we wouldn't like hand it out, tell me what you think, you know.
Thirty seconds, tell me.
Yeah. What's the issue? What's the issue?
Yeah, that's good. Anything to make it easier, that, you know, a little more streamlined.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So I just have one more thing on my brief.
Oh.
Sorry. It's, it's brief. So I, I'm going to Montpelier on Friday to the Vermont Lees of Cities and Towns. They've asked me to be on their environmental policy committee. So when I raised the issue about the dams, then they said, oh, you should be on the environmental policy committee and help us with the policy.
Yay.
And I'm like, I just wanted the question answered. They want to raise, so I'm hoping it can be beneficial. So I have my own agenda item. So when I go up there.
That's good. That, well, that's why you go to Montpelier because you have an agenda. Okay. So that was one of the things under new business that I wanted to discuss was doing, starting to get through policies. The second one was MRP. So we kind of discussed this, but replacing these windows, I sent Judy the information of the person I used at the library. So maybe we can get at least a quote from him and maybe another one and try for that maybe as a big ask. The other thought was, Celia said we have some funds in the building fund here. So once we get the estimate, kind of decide, maybe we say we have forty-five hundred dollars to put against it, kind of, but we need to see what the number is first. Okay? And then the other thing was, this morning we had a special meeting and set the tax rate and I just wanted to share the tax rate, since that was just a quick meeting this morning. So the homestead tax rate for the school is one point three one nine two. For the town is one point two one two two. For a total of two point five three one four. And non-residential for the school is one point seven four seven three. For the town, one point two one two two. For a total non-residential of two nine five nine five. And Celia also shared with us just a cost comparison and it's on a hundred thousand dollar home value, the difference is about eighty-six dollars in the total. So, and just as a reminder, we did not increase water and sewer. So I don't think people should be screaming in the streets. But, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, respectable that we're, so you figure that we're about five and a half total. We're like a little over two at the school. So, yeah, it's about, we're kind of about equal on that. So. Anything else for new business that anyone wants to bring up?
Layout. I like this better than the old layout.
Yeah.
You can see, you can hear.
Yeah.
And you feel like you're part of.
And I can shut that door now.
All right.
Because it's hard when they're in there, and I'm in here and they're on a phone call. It's on speaker all the time and it's just, you know, the acoustics in here is not great. So.
Yeah, much better.
And the air, I know it's not too cool in here, but it helps, I think.
That's good. It's not bad.
Yeah. Well, it's seven oh one. We're going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I bet you took those tears.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.